The Wauwatosa School Board, it's Monday, November 25th, 7:00 PM. In the Administration Building Boardroom on the lower level. We begin this meeting with a moment of silent reflection. All right, thank you, Dr. Erdl, please will you call the roll?
Mrs. Fee?
Here.
Mr. Deroz?
Here.
Mr. Croner?
Here.
Mrs. Muefeld?
Here.
Mrs. Randall?
Here.
Mrs. Reyes?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here. Members of the Wauwatosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. Is there anyone present who would like to comment on a non-agenda item? Seeing none, we will move on to approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda which Board members would like to remove for separate discussion and action? Mr. Croner, yes?
I'd like to discuss the October 22nd inservisement separately, if we could.
The October 22nd in-service?
Minutes.
Minutes. All right. Let me see. Are you requesting separate action on the... At this time?
Um...
We can hold on that answer until after group discussion, if you wish.
I guess let's take it separately. I would request we take it separately.
All right, we'll do that. May I have a... Let me see here. Let me see how to do this. All right, I'll need a motion to approve the minutes of the October 22nd in-service separately from the rest of the consent agenda. May I have such a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Croner. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Fee. Board discussion on these minutes. Mr. Croner, is there something you would like to say?
Actually, I just had a couple of questions. The minutes went through a couple of revisions, and the final revision seemed to me to be stripped of most of the important action steps that we took at the meeting. So I would just, as a point of clarification, I'm just wondering, what is the Board going to use as a record for the action steps that we agreed upon at that meeting, since they aren't in the minutes?
So just to be clear, you're speaking of not action taken at the meeting, but items for future activity?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Would anyone like to respond to Mr. Croner's question? I don't, was I in that, I don't believe I was attending that meeting, was I? No, so I can't speak to what was, what transpired at the meeting.
Were no motions or actions taken? And this, this recording of the minutes is in sync with past practice for our in-services?
All right. Is there any other Board comment regarding the proposed minutes?
I have some more comments. So, so the answer is that there are no specific action steps coming out of that meeting, other than what's listed in the minutes?
No. My answer, I, nobody voted on anything. It's an in-service, Phil, just like all of our other in-services where we list what the discussions are and that they've been had. There were no votes taken, there was no action taken, there was a lot talked about.
Now, just to be clear-
This is a recording of the minutes.
You're talking about, Mr. Croner, you're talking about, about what would essentially be considered agenda topics for future meetings, is that...
Well, one of them, in the, in the minutes that we have from the September 2nd, September 10th in-service, the paragraph, "And the discussion resulted in the following agreements to be put into operation," there's a whole series of bullet points. And those types of agreements that we reached at the October 22nd in-service aren't, I'm just wondering, we did reach agreements at the meeting, and I'm just wondering, are they not written down anywhere, or is there a record of those? Perhaps the Chair of the meeting could answer.
Then I will, will speak, as I chaired that meeting. I, I think what has complicated this matter a bit is that there wasn't agreement coming out of that meeting on the particular operational items. And, and I am in the process of putting together more specific notes based on what our facilitator came to us with, as well as the actual photograph of the board that we worked on. And what I would suggest that we do with that information, if it can fit into our next in-service, which I believe is scheduled on December 2nd, if we could do a recap of that board and information, so we can have alignment, because following this meeting on October 22nd and putting together the notes and the minutes, certainly there was a different understanding coming out of that meeting from different Board members. So that's what I suggest we do.
Yes, Mr. Croner.
The reason I brought this up, and the reason that I'm confused by this, is I'm approaching these meetings in good faith. And I remember Mrs. Fee asking at the end of the meeting for Mr. Hughes to describe what it is that we agreed to work on moving forward, and he gave a list of four or five items, and no one disagreed at that time. Subsequently, you stated at, some, Mrs. Muefeld, at the subsequent board meeting, that you say, "We further stated that we wanted to focus on literacy as well as math." I thought those came out very strong in our session, no one disagreed at that time either. And so, I guess I'm, and then you wrote a minutes that had a statement describing that in them, which I thought fairly accurately described what we had agreed on at the meeting, but apparently a Board member objected to that, and now I'm concerned that all of that is now thrown out or to be reconsidered. So I'm just a little curious how we can have in-service-
Mr. Meyer, can I ask you to consider Robert's rules of orders and what is supposed to be in meeting minutes? Please?
Well, I can't specifically tell you. Customarily, they discuss matters, they list matters discussed, action items, which here would be future agenda items, and decisions made. As there were no actions agended for the meeting, there could be no decisions made. So that would be the end of the content of the minutes. If there's disagreement over the minutes as offered, someone may make an amendment to, make a motion to amend the minutes. If there's sufficient disagreement by any Board member, of course, that would be in their, you know-
Okay.
-in their power to do.
Because just by discussing them, we're continuing the discussion as it was going on at the in-service, which had no closure-
I see, I see your point. I see your point, I see your point.
If, if Mr. Croner would make his amendment, we could get moving.
Okay, I see your point. By discussing what was discussed as a future agenda item, we actually continue the content of that meeting. All right. Mr. Croner, do you have, is your point made? Do you wish to, and then do you wish to make a motion to amend the minutes?
The point I'm going to make is I don't think the minutes accurately reflect what we discussed at the meeting. And I think they've really been stripped of all, not all, but much of the accurate content that has to do with what we were going to do moving forward. And some of those items were actually stated several times at, at the meeting and after the meeting, and no one objected. And I'm concerned that Board members then expressed, one or more Board members then expressed objections privately, and somehow that made everything that we did at the meeting somehow not an agreement anymore. And I'd like to be able to approach these meetings in good faith, but the minutes need to reflect what we're going to do.
Okay, you understand that you are a little bit on shaky ground by claiming that any agreement should be reflected in the minutes when there were no action items agended for the meeting. Now, I take you on your good faith, but also please realize that you, at some point, the conversation here becomes a, you know, an advocacy for the idea that there was some kind of decision made, procedural or not, at that meeting, when we are not agenda to make decisions at that meeting. So where it stops being procedural, your objection, and where it starts being substantive, I wasn't at the meeting, so I can't really tell, I just caution you that you have to watch, watch, you know, how you proceed with this. So-
Just have one final comment.
Yes.
I, I understand what you're saying. I don't necessarily agree with your analysis that we didn't take specific action on items at the meeting, because generally in services, if we don't vote or take action on items when we agree to move forward with items.
Well-
Croner, you have an opportunity to remedy this by making an amendment?
I believe I have the floor, I believe I still have the floor.
Can we make an amendment, so we can talk about it specifically?
Excuse me, please.
We've, we did this at the whole in-service.
Yeah, I understand, I understand. So, I guess you're to the point then, Mr. Croner, where you're claiming that there was action taken at the meeting? That's how I'm hearing it. You may vote against the minutes then, to reflect your opinion, at least with respect to the President of the Board, myself, who sets agendas for future meeting, meetings. Of course, I am not aware of any such agreement, and I set the agenda in consultation with Dr. Erdl, in the best interest of the school district. So whether there was or wasn't any agreement, it will have no effect on my actions. So at some point, the, the debate becomes meaningless here. So, just my view, I will vote to abstain. I, my vote will be an abstention, because I was not at the meeting, therefore I don't feel comfortable voting yes or no on the minutes for the meeting. Mrs. Muefeld, yes?
Thank you. I just want to add that the minute review process, it went through the same process that we use for all of our school board minutes. It was noticed properly to all of the school board members, and, and it went through several reviews and publications. There was nothing secretive about our process in this case. However, I agree, there was lack of agreement on what should be proposed in the minutes, which is why we have the copy you see here tonight.
Generally speaking, my practice in my time as President of the Board is that the, the Chair of the meeting leads in the crea, the Chair of the meeting leads in the creation of the first draft of the minutes, and may have final say-so on the draft that is presented to the Board for vote or discussion. So, I'll just leave it at that. And Mrs. Muefeld has spoken her view with regards to the minutes and their accuracy. Is there any other Board comment on the minutes of that meeting?
It'll be brief.
Yes, Mrs. Randall?
The remedy here is, Mr. Croner, that you propose a motion to amend the minutes, with the specific information that you want included, that we can all hear, and then we can vote on it. That's a lot different than just sitting here and talking and complaining.
No, is there any other, is there any other comment?
If you want to do an amendment or-
Um, Mrs. Randall, is there any other comment? Does anyone wish to offer a motion to amend the minutes? Seeing none, we'll call the roll. Dr. Erdl, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Deroz?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
No.
Mrs. Muefeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Reyes?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Abstained. We will now bring up the rest of the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda items?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Fee. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Deroz. Is there any Board discussion?
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Our new data analyst is here, and Mrs. Ehrenberger is going to introduce her.
Oh, yes, okay.
Because, I, sorry. Okay, I would like to just introduce Michelle Anderson, who is our data analyst and assessment coordinator recommended for approval this evening. She'd be replacing Nicole Byer, who previously served in that position. Michelle's worked the past six years as a data analyst and program coordinator at the Medical College of Wisconsin, where she works at the direction of Dr. Timothy McCullough, who is a research professor of psychiatry and behavioral medicine, and also biostatistics. In her work at the medical college, she's managed extremely large data files, developed her statistical knowledge, and presented data findings both nationally and internationally. She comes to us very highly regarded and recommended by department members for her data management analysis skills, also her detailed, organized work ethic, her written and presentational communication skills, and her ability to work well with all diverse audiences on the topic of data. So, she's here this evening, I don't know that she's prepared anything, but I'd just like to introduce her to you.
Thank you. We have lots for you to do.
We have, we have data, okay.
Yeah, we do.
So, and, and I'll also note, and not out of bias, but out of pride, and I'll speak as well for Dr. Erdl, your attendance at University of Wisconsin at La Crosse, two, two people sitting at this table are alums of that institution, one a distinguished alum, may I say, Dr. Erdl, so we're very pleased that you're coming on board here. Is there any other Board comment? Is there any community comment? Seeing none, Dr. Erdl, please, will you call the roll on the remainder of the consent agenda?
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Deroz?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Muefeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yep, I mean, yes.
Mrs. Reyes?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, thank you. Yep, is that-
I know, I'm breathing, I'm sorry, I'm taking some deep breaths.
Okay, we will recognize yep and nope as votes of the Board. So, next, our action item is the Chapter 220 and Open Enrollment Recommendations for 2014, 2015. Mrs. Muefeld, please, will you read the motion?
Yes, thank you. It is recommended that the School Board approve the following for determining space available for the 2014, 2015 school year for Chapter 220 and Open Enrollment, as presented and discussed at the November 11th meeting. No seats available for new students through the Chapter 220 program. Use a maximum class size of 18 students per class at K-4 and K-5, and 20 at grades 1 through 5. Use a maximum class size of 23 in the core academic subjects at the secondary level, grade 6 through 12. Admit continuing students, those currently on tuition waivers outside the space availability determined using the class size guidelines of 18, 20, or 23, as stated above. Maintain the current practice of accepting siblings of current students within available space determinations. Sibling applicants receive statutory preference in the lottery process. Determination for space available in special education for new open enrollment students will establish a caseload of 1 to 5 for special education teachers, and 1 to 15 for speech and language pathologists assigned to a building. And I so move.
Thank you, Mrs. Muefeld. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Randall. Is there Board discussion or questions? Yes, Mrs. Reyes.
So, this is my first year going through this, and I know, Teresa, you said that it's kind of the same as it was other years. I'm trying to understand how these determined class sizes at K-4 through 5 really impact then, and maybe how they're estimated, is a better way of saying it, and how that results in the actual number the following year? So they're, they're estimated, I'm taking in March, February or March for the following school year, and that's what's used to determine, or can you clarify the process?
The process for determining space?
Yes.
Specifically, it's, it's not an estimate, it's, we have used that number of 18 for JK and SK for, since before I came here, knowing that if we're going to make a split in a class size, that we can have possibly some open enrollment students enter our district that way. We keep it lower at JK and SK, because we anticipate that there's going to be some resident students joining our district at that area.
Right.
And then as far as the special education caseloads, middle school and high school caseloads, it's the numbers that we have in place, we staff at a higher level. So, there would never be space for open enrollment students.
I think I'm not making my question fair enough.
I understand your question, and we use-
And I've gone back and forth.
We use actual numbers. So, we, we start in February, and we roll the third, second, second Friday in January numbers with the second count date. We roll those numbers forward, and then we continually update them, and Student Services sends out an updated list. I think it gets to the point where it's every week, but for a while it's once a month, then every other week, with updated numbers for actual enrollments, for every single enrollment as we go through. The one change we have done is we've waited later to add open enrollment, in particular at the JK level. Because of that reason, we, we want to make sure we get a completely accurate JK count. We've always added, in the past, we've added, we started JK in March, April, and added. Now, we're trying to wait, we've waited until July, and since the law has changed, where we can add students up to the third Friday in, in August, so we can wait even longer to fill those, to make sure we get an accurate number of resident, because we don't want to overfill, overfill the classes. We don't want a situation where we add five open enrollment students in March, and then we get five new resident enrollments, and all of a sudden we're sitting at JK with 26, 27, 28 kids, and then we end up splitting. The one thing we did back in 2008 is had a study done by Virgil Krauss, and they actually took into account, I looked at it again today, but it takes into account all of our, all of our fixed costs, all of our variable costs, in determination of whether, what we should do with open enrollment, and their recommendations were, fill empty seat, fill empty seats, don't create new seats for open enrollment. So, we've stuck to that, we've continued with that. But the thing we have done, I think, which has been helpful, and actually looking at our average class size this year, which at the elementary level is 21.1, which is down from 23.2 last year, so we've actually gone down this year in class sizes with an increase in resident enrollment. And it's just how the class sizes played out, and we go anywhere from 16, 16 to 26 students in the elementary, 26 being the largest, and 16 out of 159 sections of elementary. But we use an accurate, we don't use an estimate, we use an accurate roll-up, and we get determinations whether kids plan to attend, we try to get as much information from the parents, whether or not they're going to be leaving at the end of the school year, and back the next year. So we try to keep it as accurate as possible, and I think, I think we're, we're pretty accurate with those numbers and enrollment projections.
Can I ask one more question? Or if anyone else needs... Okay, so if there is a situation where, and I'm just using what I know, where first grade and second grade each year has been 26 kids, that I've observed, is that because there is a big jump going from K-5 to first grade of resident students, and therefore in the K-5 class, there were open enrollment slots? And then, when they jumped to first grade, how do you get to a situation where, where, it's just a, I'm trying to understand-
How do we get to a 26, for example?
For first grade, and then second grade? I'm just under, trying to understand, because when people ask me this, I don't know how to explain it.
It could be, it could be any, there's so many different variations of how it could get there. Some of it could be that open enrollment, it may have started at JK at 18 kids, and there's been an influx, and we've had that happen in, in some of the schools in different grade levels over time, where for some reason, there was a certain grade level where we had a lot of resident kids that moved in, and came in, and we ended up having large class sizes.
I think too, it can also be for, your open enrollment classes, once you get beyond SK, you can assume that there might be some students in that class that enrolled as resident students, and then moved out of the district, so they're also open enrollment. So it's not a student that we've said, we've accepted you via open enrollment, it's a student that actually was a resident, finished the year on a tuition waiver, and is now enrolled in the district through open enrollment. So that's how some of our open enrollment numbers happen.
I think I can add to the conversation a little bit. First, and I've done this analysis, I haven't done it yet this year, but for the past few years, I've tracked whether we gain or lose students as they move from grade to grade, and Dr. Erdl has it right here. And what we see is that the residents in SK, that number, tends to stay with us through fifth grade. Then there will be an adjustment incoming or outgoing as the, as that cohort moves to middle school. Then there will be an adjustment incoming or outgoing as that cohort moves into high school. So, it is the, the SK number that does predict future resident enrollment, and it is stable for the, for the five years that that cohort is in elementary school. Now, that stability is not perfect, some schools in some years, kids come and kids go, but we, we do put it on a data grid and, and try to get a visual picture of it. The, the second thing to remember is that this number we're voting on tonight is the, the fill level at the be, at which we will declare there is open seats. That is a different concept, although it can be related. It's different from this number that's used to split the class. That you could keep this, this, this open seat number, and raise or lower that number that, where the decision is made to split the class. And in some senses, the ultimate class size is as, is very much determined by the number that you use to split the class, and not so much by the number that you use to fill empty seats for open enrollment purposes. Now, that's, that's not a pure separation, obviously the two are related, but just to say, those two different decisions interplay with each other. And a, a too larger class may be the result of the split number, and not the result of the number of open enrollment kids that came in. Of course, then, you know, you get even more complicated if you're out of rooms, if you don't have any more rooms in the building, then, then you're kind of painted into a corner on whether you can split. So, just to add that to the discussion.
Thank you.
Mrs. Randall?
I just wanted to note that I had asked at the previous meeting for some additional information, at which, thank you, you and your staff provided, I think everybody got this. I have a lot of questions, but as I look at the data, and as I think of specifically my questions, I don't think that the open enrollment arena is, is the place to have it, it's much broader. You referred a little bit to special education needs that, you know, we're, we're getting, but we were unaware of. So, my questions about resources and support, and being able to support all of the different situations that we have in the district, I think I will hold for when we have the audit for Student Services. So, my comments and questions are really about resources. Do we have enough? You know, are they in the right places? And so, there's just a myriad of things that go into this, so... But anyway, thank you for this, and for the conversation over the last couple days.
Is there any other Board comment? Is there any community comment? Seeing none, Dr. Erdl, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Deroz?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Muefeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Reyes?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, motion carries, 7-0. Dr. Erdl, please fill us in with the update on the School Board election plans.
An election will be held in the Wauwatosa School District on April 1st, 2014, to elect four at-large Board members serving in numbers, numbered seats for the Wauwatosa School Board, to serve a three-year term, beginning on the third Monday of April 2014. The present incumbent Board members are seat number four, Mary Jo Randall, seat number five, Tom Deroz, seat number six, Sharon Muefeld, and seat number seven, Carmela Reyes. Nomination papers must indicate the numbered seat for which a candidate intends to run. If more than two candidates for any numbered seat file nomination papers, a primary election will be held on February 18th, 2014. First day candidates may circulate nomination papers is December 1st, 2013, and the final, final day for filing nomination papers is 5:00 PM, January 7th, 2014. The deadline for incumbents to file notice of non-candidacy is 5:00 PM- The deadline for incumbents to file notice of non-candidacy is 5:00 PM on December twenty-seventh. School board election forms may be downloaded from the Wisconsin State Elections Board website at http colon slash slash gab.wi.gov, or you can contact the superintendent's office at 773-1010, if there are further questions.
Yes, there are a great many resources online with respect to this activity. So, is there any community question with regards to this item? All right. Seeing none, is there any public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none, and then Dr. Erdl, or, I'm sorry, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Fee. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jeros. Dr. Erdl, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Jeros?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, so we are adjourned.